My name is Tom Kirkman. I'm the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And I now call back into session the June regular meeting of the city of High Point, Planning and Zoning Commission. I will ask for the recording secretary to conduct a roll call of the commissioners that are in attendance this evening.
Commissioners, can I call your name? Please respond, present if you are in the meeting room and remote if you are currently rolling. Mr. Kirkman?
In the meeting room. Present.
Ms. McGill?
Present.
Ms. Stone?
Remote.
Ms. Swift?
Present.
Mr. Venable?
This is Mike Carr, remote.
Karen Venable is remote.
Mr. Walsh?
Present.
Mr. Wheatley?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven members responding for a roll call.
All right, we do have a forum. This is the continuation of the June 23 meeting. I want to acknowledge for the record that the commission has received an additional public comment on one of the hearing items. Commission will now deliberate the former lady's recommendation on the items heard on Tuesday evening. Because this is a remote meeting, commission members need to announce their name and make comments, motions from second. Also, all votes made will be by roll call. First item we'll be discussing and voting on this evening will be zoning map amendment 20-05, which is a request to rezone 3.5 acres to the conditional zoning light industrial district. I do not believe there were any public comments, any further public comments received on this item. Does the applicant have anything additional they would like to present at this time?
No, I don't. I'm fine with everything that's been presented thus far.
Very good. Are there any questions or comments from the commissioners regarding this item? If not, I will entertain a motion regarding the commission's recommendation.
Mark Walsh makes a motion to approve.
John Swift, I'll second that.
Very well. Motion has been made by Commissioner Walsh and seconded by Commissioner Swift to approve the motion as presented. Do the commissioners understand the motion?
Yes.
So I will ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioners, can I call your name? Please respond, yes or no, in response to the motion to approve ZO 2005. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven votes in favor of the motion.
Very well. By a vote of seven to zero, this application has been favorably recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We will need a consistency statement for the record.
Mark Walsh, I move that the commission adopt a statement that the zoning map amendment 20-05 is consistent with the city's adopted policy guidance, calls as condition. The request CZ-LI district is supported by policies of the land use plan and does not conflict with previously established land use policies governing this segment of the Eastchester Quarter Plan. Furthermore, the request is reasonable and in the public interest for causes conditioned. The request to CZ-LI district will be consistent with adjacent zoning approval granted for similar abutting LI zone properties lying outside the Eastchester Gateway Quarter Overlay District.
I'll second that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion that needs to be heard? If not, I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioners, can I call your name? Please respond, yes or no, in favor of the consistency statement. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven votes in favor of the consistency statement.
By a vote of seven to zero, consistency statement has been adopted. A final public hearing on this item is tentatively scheduled before the city council on, what will that date be?
July 20th.
Is that correct, July 20th? I'll have to check my list.
Yes, July 20th.
Beginning at 5:30 PM. And I believe we don't yet know whether that will be done through a public hearing or a closed hearing. I mean, that still has to be determined, right? We don't know if it will be in council chambers or...
It would likely be in council chambers, but it would likely not be open to the public. It'll be a very similar public comment process. They will get notification, the applicants will get notification, as well as the citizens will get notification of how to comment.
The format is yet to be determined, in other words.
Specific.
Okay. All right. Next item on tonight's agenda, zoning map amendment 20-06. This is a request to rezone 4.9 acres to the light industrial district. Does the applicant have anything they would like to add this evening? I may not be present. In that case, are there any questions or comments from the commission on this item? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve amendment ZA 20-06 as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner McGill has seconded the motion to approve as presented. Do the commissioners understand the motion? Are there any questions? If not, I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioners, can I call your name? Please say yes or no in response to the motion to approve ZA 2006. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven votes in favor of that motion.
Very well. This application has been favorably recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission by a vote of seven to zero. We will require a consistency statement for the record.
This is Ray Wheatley. I move that the commission adopt a statement that zoning and planning map amendment 20-06 is consistent with the city's adopted policy guidance because the site is designated restricted industrial by the land use plan and the LI district does not conflict with any adopted policy guidelines for this area. Furthermore, the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the LI district will permit current industrial use of the property, on the property, and is compatible with previous zoning approvals granted in the area along Boulder Road.
Very well, we have a second.
Second.
Commissioner McGill has seconded the motion. We have a consistency statement moved by Commissioner Wheatley and seconded by Commissioner McGill. Are there any questions or comments on the motion? If not, I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioners, can I call your name? Please respond, yes or no, in response to approval of the consistency statement for ZH 2006. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Chairman, you have seven votes in favor of the motion.
Very well. Consistency statement has been adopted. Final public hearing on this item is tentatively scheduled before the city council on July 20th, beginning at 5:30 PM.
Mr. Chairman, I'll read that August 3rd.
August 3rd. I'll note that correction. Final public hearing on this item is tentatively scheduled before the city council on August 3rd, beginning at 5:30 PM. The next item on tonight's agenda is zoning map amendment 20-07, which is a request to rezone 114 acres to an amended planned unit development residential district. We did receive a public comment. All the commissioners get a copy of that?
Yes.
And did the applicant present?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah. Did she receive a copy of the public comment we did receive?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to ask, I'm going to read directly, this was from Mr. Ray Laurel, 992 Willminder Lane in Polfax. He said Keystone Group was asking for 450 units, the commission that was present in 2016 decided that was too many for the property, so it reduced to 300, and Keystone Group agreed that they could build a bridge across the creek, join the property, take the whole 479 acre development. Now, four years later, and they do not have half the project completed and are asking for another 102 more units. So in general, I think the comment here is related to the fact that the previous agreements in, was 2015 or 2016? It was 16?
It was 16, Herc.
Yes, the application was submitted in late 2015 and the final approval was in 2012.
So the developer had agreed to reduce the number of units to 300, and now they are asking for another 102 more. Can you address that? Is the applicant still with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I couldn't hear you for a minute there.
Okay. Well, in short, we had a public comment from a gentleman that was questioning, the developer had previously agreed to a maximum of 300 units, and now they're back asking for another 102 units. Can you address that?
Yes. As I said Tuesday evening, the market has changed dramatically since 2016. At that time, we felt like that would make a nice development at 2.6 units an acre. Now we're up a little bit more than that, about one unit an acre more, and it will add the density that's necessary to make, to pay for the infrastructure and to make it a tax positive for the city rather than burden to the city.
Thank you. Any of the commissioners have any comments on the change in number of units?
Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
This is Marie Stone.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just have to say I'm uncomfortable with this because of the 25% increase in density and the fact that we can't really address public comments. That's just my comment.
Thank you. I mean, I have a bit of a problem with this too, because once the developer agrees to a certain number of units, I realize markets change, but there wasn't agreement. Any comments from any of the other commissioners on this?
John Swift, so the one comment I read about the traffic out there, because it is hard to get out from back in there onto Sandy Ridge, so would there be any address of getting a stoplight or something? You know, there's basically, if you come out of Boylston, you can either turn on the Atkins and go down, come out of Sandy Ridge right there at Saddle Creek, or whatever that is, or you can turn up and go out near the farmer's market. Those are the two ways out unless you go back out off Bunker Hill.
So essentially, you're asking, are they going to do anything to facilitate the traffic?
One of the comments that I read that was the complaint was that you're adding another 100 homes, and it's already really hard to get out there now, and the development's only a third finished, I think is what that person...
And that's probably a question for the applicant, I believe.
Thank you. Yes, the development is being built as the traffic impact analysis was described it, which was designed for 450 units, not 300 units. So adding another 102 units is still below the level of trips that the traffic impact study presumed when doing that study. So we've done improvements on Boylston Road, we've done improvements within, and we've done a turn lane. We'll have viable connections, three viable connections when we complete this part, plus additional stubs to adjacent properties that we all know will develop soon.
Do you believe that the full 102 additional units will be built, or is that simply, are we increasing the density, hoping you will be able to use more of the property to get close to the original 300?
I can't say that all of those units will be built. As you can see on our track record in Track B, we had planned 120 units and have ended up with 96. On Track F, we planned 30 units and we've ended up with 28. So no, I don't think necessarily all those units would be built, but it's nice to have the density to work with.
Okay, I understand, thank you.
I just hope all the lights are on. You agree?
That was... You want to be on the record that Mr. Walsh had a comment?
Yeah, I just said the topo that I saw wouldn't stand for that many, but you always grade it, but I don't see them spending that, and they could, but... Right, Duty?
Yes, the topo is very difficult out there.
Any other comments from the commission?
Ray Wheatley here. My one comment is that they did the traffic study based on 450, they spent the money and put it in for that, to deal with 450, and now they're down to 402.
And they may not build all 402.
So can I just...
Yes. Chair, right back to Ms. Swift.
Just want to clarify the boundary and duty rights. So they're mainly doing this because they've gotten the, the topos are a lot steeper than what they had originated, and so they're wanting the option to do it, they may or may not build that many, so...
And the traffic issue was originally addressed because originally they had planned to build more than 300 units anyway. So even if they built at the original, what was the original number they were talking about?
They originally asked for 50.
It was actually built to have 450.
So now it's 402.
Okay. There's no more comments or discussion from the commission, I'll entertain a motion regarding the commission's recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve zoning map amendment 20-08.
Do we have a second?
I think that was clarification, zoning map amendment 20-7?
Yes, I'm sorry. Correction.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion has been moved by Commissioner McGill and seconded by Commissioner Walsh to approve the request as presented. Do the commissioners understand the motion? Do they have any questions? If not, I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioners, can I call your name? Please respond, yes or no, in response to the motion to approve zoning map amendment 20-07. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
No.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have six votes in favor and one vote against.
Very well. By a vote of six to one, this application has been favorably recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We will need a consistency statement for the record.
I move that the commission adopt a statement that zoning map amendment 20-07 is consistent with the city's adopted policy guidance because both the adopted land use plan and Northwest Area Plan designate this as a low-density residential, which is a land use classification that supports densities up to five units per acre. Furthermore, the request is reasonable and in public interest because the impacts are mitigated from the requested increase in dwelling units, which would be a maximum of 102 additional dwelling units, increasing the planned development to a maximum of 3.5 units per acre.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A consistency statement has been moved by Commissioner McGill and seconded by Commissioner Walsh. There's no discussion or questions, I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioners, can I call your name? Please answer, yes or no, in response to the approval of the consistency statement for zoning map amendment 20-07. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
No.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have six votes in favor and one vote against.
Very well. By a vote of six to one, consistency statement has been adopted. Final public hearing on this item is tentatively scheduled before the city council on, will this be the 3rd or?
Yes.
August 3rd.
August 3rd, beginning at 5:30 PM. The next item on tonight's agenda is zoning map amendment 20-08, which is to request to rezone 29 acres to a conditional zoning residential multifamily five district. I do not believe there are any further public comments received on this item. If the applicant is present, do they wish to add any additional information at this time?
No, thank you.
Very well. Do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments? Nothing? Very well. If there's no more discussion from the commission, I'll entertain a motion regarding the recommendation for this item.
John Swift, I'll make a motion and accept as presented.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Swift and seconded by Commissioner Walsh to approve the recommendation as presented. Does everyone understand the motion or are there any questions? If not, I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioners, can I call your name? Please answer, yes or no, in response to the motion to approve zoning map amendment 20-08. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven votes in favor of the motion.
By a vote of seven to zero, this application has been favorably recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt a consistency statement.
I move that the commission adopt the statement that zoning map amendment 20-08 is consistent with the city's adopted policy guidance because the land use plan classifies this area as low-density residential, which supports residential uses at density of five units per acre, and both the C U R five districts and the proposed Z R N five district allow residential development at max five units per acre. Furthermore, the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the proposal would allow the creation of residential development that would provide a land use transition from the high end to the multifamily development adjacent to the south to lower end with single family residential development to north.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
A consistency statement has been moved by Commissioner Swift and seconded by Commissioner Walsh. If there's no questions or further discussion on the motion, I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioners, can I call your name? Please answer, yes or no, in response to approval of the consistency statement for zoning map amendment 20-08. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven votes in favor of the motion.
By a vote of seven to zero, a consistency statement has been adopted. Final public hearing on this item is tentatively scheduled before the city council on August 3rd, beginning at 5:30 PM.
Is that number eight?
Yes.
Is that, I thought that, just confirmed my note that was...
I have August 3rd on my paperwork.
That's August 3rd, because it's associated with reason, that was the annexation. Notice that it's not, it's not. That's the one on Northtown Road? Okay. Sweet. We had four going to the 20th, and four going to the 3rd. That's one of the four going, tentatively going to the 3rd. Yes, 06, 07, 08, 15, are all scheduled for the 3rd. 12, 11, 10, and the first one was the 20th.
So do we have an official date?
Yeah, it is... Yeah, that would be August the 3rd.
Okay. All right. Final public hearing on this item, zoning map amendment 20-08, is tentatively scheduled before the city council on August 3rd, beginning at 5:30 PM. Next item on the agenda is zoning map amendment 20-10, to request to rezone four acres to an amended conditional zoning general business district. I don't believe we've received any further public comments on this item. We'll move to the applicant if there's anything that they would like to add.
No, thank you.
Very well. And does the commission have any questions or comments on this item? Nothing? Very well. If there's no more questions, excuse me?
Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
I was just going to remark on what you mentioned the other night, the fact that when we changed this, we are setting a precedent for the West Windover Avenue-Gilford College Road Plan. And I just wondered about the staff's comments on that. I know they're agreeable, but long range.
I know that in the meeting last night, I had asked about, there's a similar sign across the street.
Right.
And so one of the things that was mentioned was, well, there's already a sign there, so this one should be allowed too. But I also asked, how did the other sign get there to begin with? And I was told by city staff that it existed before this corridor plan was put into effect. And what that told me was, surely council knew that sign was there, and they put a plan into effect to stop any more similar signs being put in. So on the one hand, I don't know that the fact that one already exists there is a good argument for allowing another one, because it seemed like council's intent was to circumvent any additional signs like that. But if I add a comment of my own, I would say it seems like we have chipped away at this corridor so much, on so many things, that I have a hard time sticking to it anymore. I mean, I think once you've thrown out various things a certain number of times, it's not really very ironclad.
Well, also, it'll be a ticker tape, what I'm calling for gas prices. If somebody else came in here with something bigger and a sign like that, we would have the right to say that is not fitting in. Is that correct, Lee?
Yeah, you have the right to review it. It just, to give you a little more background, just relative to the plan, I don't think, there was no real conscious decision to say that prior development had a sign and we don't want that to happen to rest of the corridor, because I don't think that shot, when that corridor plan was done, I don't think that development had fully developed to that point. How it evolved was, was the corridor plan was done in conjunction with Guilford County and Greensburg. You may remember about that time is when all the big box boom was happening on the other end, the area of State Forty at the time, and Greensburg couldn't keep up with the infrastructure improvements and everything, and it was happening much faster than any infrastructure to keep up with. And so that was a joint plan that was done by the three jurisdictions. The city of High Point indicated that much, and at that time, Windover Avenue was a two-lane roadway that had been improved to a four-lane divided roadway. It was pretty much recognized by the city that that was going to be another entrance way or gateway into the city. And one of the things they had looked at as far as the plan was whether or not to develop a corridor overlay district, much like Eastchester. Eastchester, as you know, is primarily non-residential in terms of the uses that occur along that corridor. You have industrial, you have commercial, you have office. You do have some residential, but primarily it's a non-residential corridor. Unlike Eastchester, Windover was intended to be primarily residential, with multifamily and residential, with basically some commercial nodes, right there with, in and around the P Road, Eastchester No. area, and at the other end, right around the P Box Center at the end. So one thing the city looked at was whether or not to establish an overlay district, much like Eastchester. And it was basically decided that it wasn't really, it was much more appropriate just to conditioned development. When non-residential development came in, at those two ends of the roadway, it was much more appropriate to conditioned development to a higher standard, rather than apply a corridor along the entire roadway, that really didn't apply to the vast majority of lands because it was multifamily. It really didn't apply to the vast majority of plans because it's multifamily, and those standards wouldn't apply to multifamily. If you're following me, what I'm saying is that the applicable aspects of the, of the corridor plan in terms of, of higher standards that relates to Eastchester, would only apply to this commercial development, say where the Paladium is and where it, it is in the area. So there still is no commercial development plan in between those areas. This is the last little piece of commercial right there at that intersection. And so when looking at this from the staff's perspective, they are complying with the vast majority in Eastchester, from, from a design standpoint, from a landscape standpoint, from signage, with the exception of this one area. Uh, the reason we'll look at it across the street is there is a, there is an electronic changeable copy sign, it is being used for gas. Unfortunately, we can't restrict it to gas only. Uh, that's something we're going to be addressing in our, um, sign order standards, that we can't just restrict that to gas only, otherwise we would, we'd all, that's how it's intended to be used, from that standpoint. So we don't feel like this is going to set any kind of precedent on a corridor because there really is not, not going to be any other commercial development along that corridor of this plant. Everything in between is going to be higher, it's residential and that thing. Uh, and there is some available land on the other side of the shopping center that could have commercial development, but it already is vested in that PUG development, which would allow for that type of sign. So again, if it is any more development, it's going to happen. It's going to happen at that intersection, and it's going to happen under that PUG zoning, and they're going to be able to have electronic changeable copy sign. That makes sense?
Chair recognizes Commissioner Swift.
Um, I have a question maybe for you, the, um, starter. That my understanding from what you said on Tuesday is the sign meets all the other criteria. The only difference is it's the same, it meets the size, whatever requirements for signs along there, except this one will just have the electronic piece to it.
I believe that's correct. Yeah, I believe that's what the staff presented last night.
Because that was my question to the President's thing, if anyone heard that, about, well, it meets everything, so it just had that one piece different.
Like I said, they are meeting all aspects of the Eastchester corridor standards with the, with this one, with the rest of the exception.
Very well. If there's no more discussion from the Commission, I'll entertain a motion regarding the recommendation on this item.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the zoning map amendment Z A twenty dash ten as presented.
Second. Motion has been made by Commissioner Wheatley and seconded by Commissioner McGill to approve this request as presented by staff. Do the Commissioners understand the motion? Are there any further questions? If not, I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner, when I call your name, please respond yes or no in response to the motion to approve zoning map amendment twenty dash ten. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven, um, in favor of that motion.
Very well. By a vote of seven to zero, this application has been favorably recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Now we will need a consistency statement entered into the record.
This is Ray Wheatley. I move that the Commission adopt the statement that zoning map amendment twenty dash eight, no, sorry, it's twenty dash ten.
Really?
Is consistent with the city's adopted policy guidance because the amended CZ G B district adheres to recommendations of the West Windover Avenue-Gilford College Road Plan, except for one aspect of the signage. Furthermore, the request is reasonable and in the public interest because a similar sign is used to display fuel prices and adjacent commercial development located at the same intersection.
Very well, I will second the motion. So we have a consistency statement moved by Commissioner Wheatley, seconded by myself, Commissioner Kirkman. Is there any discussion on the motion? Does everyone understand it? I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner, when I call your name, please answer yes or no in response to the motion to approve the consistency statement for zoning map amendment twenty dash ten. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven votes in favor of that motion.
Thank you. My vote of seven to zero, consistency statement has been adopted. The next item on tonight's agenda, zoning map amendment twenty dash eleven. This is a request to rezone sixty-five acres to an amended conditional zoning residential multifamily sixteen district. I don't believe there were any further public comments received on this item since we met on Tuesday. Uh, we have, can't like to add any additional information? If not, we will turn it over to the Commissioners for questions or comments.
Mr. Chairman, just a few, because this is a combined conditional zoning ordinance, they could, oh, they have to be separate, can't do it together. These are sections, two different, two different ordinances, they're both not.
Okay. I believe we heard them together, and it's, we vote separate. Thank you. Any, uh, further comments from the Commissioners?
Um, this is Ray Wheatley. Uh, one question I have is there are, track D is separated from track C, do they plan to join that somehow, or, and use that in the property, or?
That would be a question for staff.
This might understand a different owner, probably who owns that, but they have obtained an easement.
Oh.
So they could use it by dropping across it.
Okay.
But I believe that twenty-foot sliver is owned by the budding, um, quarry.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
In that case, you ready? In that case, um, I'll entertain a motion for a recommendation on this item.
Uh, Mark Walsh, I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Walsh, seconded by Commissioner McGill, to approve the motion as presented by staff. Assuming the Commissioners understand the motion and there's no more questions, I will ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner, when I call your name, please answer yes or no in response to the motion to approve zoning map amendment twenty dash eleven. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven votes in favor of the motion.
By a vote of seven to zero, this application has been favorably recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And now we will need a consistency statement.
This is, uh, Mark Walsh. I move that the Commission adopt a statement that the zoning map amendment twenty dash eleven is consistent with the city's adopted policy guidance because the land use plan designates this area as medium-density residential, which supports a variety of residential use types at densities up to sixteen units per acre. Furthermore, the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the request amendment only adjusts the timing of the transportation improvements in conjunction with the modifications to track boundaries and does not change any previously required improvements.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Consistency statement has been moved by Commissioner Walsh and seconded by Commissioner Wheatley. If there's no discussion or questions on the motion, I'll ask the recording secretary to take a roll call vote.
Commissioner, when I call your name, please respond yes or no in response to the motion to adopt the consistency statement for zoning map amendment twenty dash eleven. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven votes in favor of the motion.
By a vote of seven to zero, consistency statement has been adopted. Final public hearing on this item is tentatively scheduled before the City Council on July twenty, beginning at five thirty P.M. The next item is zoning map amendment twenty dash twelve, which is a request to rezone eight acres to an amended conditional zoning residential multifamily sixteen district. Does the applicant have anything additional to offer? I don't believe we got any further public comments on this. There's nothing from the applicant or the Commissioners? In that case, I'll understand a motion regarding, uh, a recommendation for this item.
Well, I'll go ahead and approve zoning map amendment twenty dash twelve.
I will second that. Marie Stone?
A motion has been made by Commissioner Walsh, seconded by Commissioner Stone, to approve this request as presented by staff. Do the Commissioners understand the motion? Are there any questions? If not, I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner, when I call your name, please respond yes or no in response to the motion to approve zoning map amendment twenty dash twelve.
I will second that. Marie Stone?
A motion has been made by Commissioner Walsh, seconded by Commissioner Stone, to approve this request as presented by staff. Do the Commissioners understand the motion? Are there any questions? If not, I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner, when I call your name, please respond yes or no in response to the motion to approve zoning map amendment twenty dash twelve. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven votes in favor of that motion.
Very well. This application has been favorably recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We will need a consistency statement for this item as well.
Is there any?
I move that the Commission adopt the statement that zoning map amendment twenty dash twelve is consistent with the city's adopted policy guidance because the land use plan designates this area as medium-density residential, which supports a variety of residential use types at densities up to sixteen units per acre. Furthermore, the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the request in the end only adjusts the timing of transportation improvements in conjunction with the modifications to track boundaries and does not change any previously required improvements.
I'll second the motion. This is Commissioner Kirkman. Consistency statement has been moved by Commissioner Swift, seconded by Commissioner Kirkman. Is there any discussion on the motion? Does everyone understand it? I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner, when I call your name, please respond yes or no in response to the motion to adopt the consistency statement for zoning map amendment twenty dash twelve. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven votes in favor of that motion.
By a vote of seven to zero, consistency statement has been adopted. The next item on our agenda this evening is text amendment twenty dash zero two, which is a request to amend various sections of the development ordinance. I do not believe we've received any public comments on this item since we last met. Uh, does the city staff have anything additional to present?
No, sir.
Very well. Uh, Commissioners, what was open for debate? Questions, comments?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve amendment case T A twenty zero two as presented.
Very well.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Wheatley, seconded by Mr. Walsh, to approve text amendment twenty dash zero two as presented by staff. Assuming everyone understands the motion and there are no further questions, I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioners, when I call your name, please respond yes or no in, in response to the motion to approve text amendment twenty dash oh two. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven votes in favor of the motion.
By a vote of seven to zero, this application has been favorably recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll need a, we need a consistency statement on the text amendment.
Yeah.
We do? Very well. I'll entertain a more consistency statement motion.
Uh, I move that the Commission adopt the statement that the text amendment twenty dash two, oh two, is consistent with the city's adopted policy guidance because these general amendments make the ordinance more user-friendly and flexible and supportive of the city's adopted policy guidance. Furthermore, the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the proposed amendments to the development ordinance addresses necessary changes as a result of the state legislation and continues to pursue making the ordinance error-free, easier to read and understand, and more consistent in its use of the language and format.
Do we have a second?
I have a second. Here, Venable.
Consistency statement has been moved by Commissioner Wheatley, seconded by Commissioner Venable. Pending any discussion or comments on that motion, I'll ask the recording secretary to conduct a roll call vote.
Commissioner, when I call your name, please respond yes or no in response to the motion to adopt the consistency statement for text amendment twenty dash oh two. Mr. Kirkman?
Yes.
Ms. McGill?
Yes.
Ms. Stone?
Yes.
Ms. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Venable?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Wheatley?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, you have seven votes in favor of the motion.